Cue video.
Okay. Meeting will come to order. Good evening, welcome to this Monday, February 22, 2016, regular meeting of the Mercer Island City Council. We've just completed a executive session and are now moving to our regular meeting. First item on our newly designed agenda is Agenda Approval. So, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Is there a second? I moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda. We have two items of special business this evening. The first is a presentation from King County Councilmember Claudia Balducci. Welcome Claudia. Welcome Councilmember Balducci. I guess I should say more formally.
Thank you. Mayor Bassett, Deputy Mayor Bertland, councilmembers, welcome. Thank you for giving me a few moments on your newly designed agenda. The first thing I want to say is congratulations on your very efficient approval of the minutes of the agenda because it took me ten years as a Bellevue City Councilmember to get that item moved up to the top of the agenda. We always approved it at the end for some reason. It made no sense at all. So, you're already way ahead of the game. But, I'm here because I wanted to just introduce myself. I know I've already done that, but I am visiting each of the eleven cities in District Six and just giving a bit of a preview of what's coming this year at King County. As many of you may know, and some of you, Mayor Bassett among them, serve on some of our regional committees, we have a very busy year this year at King County. We're going to be adopting our biennial budget. We're going to be implementing the Best Starts for Kids levy that the voters approved in November. That's a lot of work for us to figure out how to get this new funding source put out to the community. One of the principles behind Best Starts for Kids that I stand behind is the idea of helping communities to help themselves, but that sometimes means that we're going to be dealing with agencies that don't have a lot of staff, that don't have a lot of experience. It means it's more difficult for them to get through a procurement process for a government as big as ours, so it's going to be a challenge and we look forward to working with you on that. We also have the Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Sales Tax Reauthorization this year. This was approved by the councils six years ago, I want to say, and it's up for reauthorization. Given how much has changed in the world of these kinds of services since that time and the homelessness crisis that we're seeing now, we're definitely going to be looking at ways to potentially redirect that money to the challenges of today. We also are gearing up for next year for the Veteran and Human Services levy, so a large amount of activity in the human services area. In transit, where I'll be serving on a number of committees, including chairing the Regional Transit Committee, we are updating King County Metro Strategic Plan and Service Guidelines, which govern how services get rolled out when we have more of them and how they get cut when we have less money. And then we'll be doing the Long Range Plan as well. At the same time, the Sound Transit Board, which I am a member of, will be putting together the Sound Transit III Plan to ask the voters to fund the next big investment in transit. So, at the end of this year, if all goes well, we're going to have a really clear path to sort of the sort of robust transit that the region really needs. One of the things I want to point out that we'll be looking at as part of the strategic plan update is this idea of alternative services, which was something that the county had committed to when adopting their new King County, new Metro Strategic Plan a while back after the Service Guidelines Task Force, I think maybe one of you or more of you served on it. And that's the idea that not every route, not every community is well-served by a fixed route bus. And so, we will be looking at ways to serve those communities better. Mercer Island was one of the first communities to get that kind of service with the shuttle that now is operating here. So, I'll be interested to hear back from you how that's working because we want to make sure that we're, you know, of course, always improving the service that we provide. We're also going to be doing a little matter of our entire countywide comprehensive plan to be updated this year and some solid waste planning that I know will be of interest to Eastside jurisdictions. I don't know if it impacts Mercer Island as much as some of the others, but it's a pretty big deal for the long-range solid waste service from the Eastside. I guess I will pause there. There's a lot I could talk about, but I really just wanted to introduce myself and share a bit of the work that we'll be doing this year and answer any questions that you may have.
Questions, councilmembers? Looks like we're going to let you off easy this evening.
That's very nice. Well, if I've got, you know, just thirty more seconds, I will just say once again, as I said, with my mom hat on here, that I'm really pleased to see you all taking up the matter of the MICA because I think it could be a wonderful addition to your city. We, as I said when I was here before, did something similar in our city and we've been very, very pleased with the results. So, I wish you luck with that deliberation and thanks again for giving me a little time on your agenda tonight.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for being here and thanks for your work on behalf of all of us. Appreciate it. Okay, we move to MISD Diversity Committee Discussion Information Chief Holmes.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councilmembers. For the record, my name is Ed Holmes, I'm your police chief. And it was probably about a year ago, I was having a conversation with Deputy Mayor Bertland around some of the work I've been doing with, in regards to public trust and building equity with our communities, our greater communities, not only in the Puget Sound area, but then across the state and the country. And she had asked me if I was aware of Dr. Plano's Diversity Advisory Committee that he has up at the school district. And I was not, but she put me in touch with him and as a result of that, I have joined that Diversity Advisory Committee. And we meet about once a month advising the superintendent on different policy ideas or giving them feedback on what we're hearing in the community relating to the diversity initiatives the school district is undertaking. And one of the things they've recently done, this committee has recommended to the superintendent to bring Dr. Pedro Nogura out on March 23 for a community discussion. And Dr. Plano had asked if the city would be interested in co-sponsoring this event. He's not asking for money, he's just simply asking that the city also encourage citizens to attend this event. It would be the evening portion, the third part of that, the seven to eight P.M. Parent Forum on Race and Equity. And Dr. Nogura, he speaks on moving beyond the zero-sum game idea and having this, the idea that rising equity tide would raise all ships, or all people, all kids benefit when equity is served in a community. So, the ask here is sort of an informal, would the city be interested in co-sponsoring this? And I think the bottom line, what that would mean is would we be willing to post something on the website or get Ross involved in helping to get the message out to the community on that seven P.M. to eight P.M. event to engage the community in this type of a discussion?
And so, the chief has asked if I will ask you all for a thumbs up, thumbs down on this, assuming that there's no cost associated with it, it's simply a matter of us agreeing to help promote this within the community through our website. Folks comfortable with that? You have your support?
Good. Thank you. I'll get with the city manager on what that means, how we roll that out later. Thank you very much.
Okay. Debbie's got a question or a statement?
Well, first of all, I am truly pleased to see Chief Holmes on that committee and also very pleased and impressed with the work that the school district and the committee itself is doing. I would like us to encourage discussions perhaps with the school district and the committee if there's an opportunity for certain staff or an element of staff, depending on who it is, within the city to take advantage of some of the learnings that could be, that could come forth from having Mr. Nogura present. I think it's an opportunity that I wouldn't want us to miss. So, in addition to having, you know, our participation, our support through the website, et cetera, like see if there's a possibility that we could bring some education into staff as well.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Benson?
Sorry, Chief. You know, I just wanted to say, I think this is a great opportunity for the community to engage in this discussion about diversity. I think certainly with the changing demographics of our city, of our region, and certainly of this country, I think this is a timely discussion. I don't necessarily think that there's anything that people can point to as wrong with Mercer Island necessarily, but I think, you know, it's also a great time for adults and kids to have a discussion. I think, you know, just thinking about my kids, I mean, I think they grew up on the island and it's kind of a sheltered community and when they start going off to college and whatever else and experiencing different folks from, meeting different folks, I should say, from different races and socioeconomic backgrounds, I think having this discussion is very helpful. So, I'm very pleased to see that the school district is taking the charge of it.
Good. Thanks for saying that. And in the committee, we've talked about that very thing, about how the kids on the island, when they go out in the work world, they will experience many different people, many different backgrounds to help. This also helps prepare them for that part of their life as well. So, thanks for that comment.
Okay. Anyone else? Dan? And then Dave?
Just one thing, they, I went to the superintendent's advisory committee, or whatever it's called, that Debbie was on last year, I'm on it this year. And apparently, they've, the school district has now approved a specific diversity policy, which obviously someone put a lot of work into it. And if that's something that the city wants to think about in terms of our own programs of adopting a similar or the same diversity policy, so we have consistency across the two governments in the island, it might be worth looking at.
Great. Thank you.
I know you're just looking for a thumbs up and you got all this talk coming at you. I was just going to make a quick comment. If you thought you needed any help from any of us in terms of participation or anything else, I would certainly raise my hand and I bet others would too. So, just put that offer out there if there's any help that you need for the event itself or anything else.
Thank you. I'll mention that to the superintendent and I'm certainly sure he'd love to see as many of you and as many from the community that could attend this evening event would be great. Good things. Thank you.
All right. Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we come to appearances. At the last couple of meetings, I've encouraged folks to think tight and short, just so that we don't end up running really late because, of course, we had the one experience of going two hours and it sort of knocked us all back. Tonight, I'll say that our agenda is relatively short. We don't have an overflow audience and so three minutes is probably going to be just fine. If you've, if you'd like to say something, I would say feel free to spend your three minutes doing it. I think we'll probably work out in terms of our timing just fine. Rules of engagement boil down to please be civil, but the more detailed rules are on the door at the back. Please introduce yourself and give us your address as you begin. And with that, we are open for public comments. And if those who are thinking of speaking could cue up, that would be great. Welcome.
Yes, good to see you. My comments tonight are about MICA and Peak, the two leases. The citizens are being told that MICA lease is pattern after Peak's lease, but in further investigation, there seems to be major differences. And some of these differences are these.
I'm sorry, did you begin by introducing yourself and giving us your address?
Oh, I didn't do that, did I?
I was...
Bob Still, S.T.I.L.L., 411 93rd Avenue Southeast.
Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, Peak is backed by a financially solid organization, King County Boys and Girls Club, which operates fourteen clubs and teen centers around King County and has a four-star rating for finances from Charity Navigator. MICA, of course, is a new organization with no experience managing a performing and visual arts center. MICA's first executive director, who was director of development for Village Theater in Issaquah for over nine years, has left MICA. Number two, Peak was built on school district land, already zoned for buildings. MICA is planned for public, open park land. Number three, the Peak leased and agreements provide onsite parking. The MICA lease has no provisions for site parking. In fact, no parking at all. Number four, Peak was built with $1 million from city for construction. MICA has indicated they expect to get $2 million from the city for construction. Number five, Peak's lease does not permit the city to give additional funds for ongoing expenses. And MICA lease permits the city to give unlimited additional funds for ongoing expenses. Number six, Peak was not in an area with critical environmental issues. MICA is planned for an area with critical environmental issues. And number seven, Peak reverts to the city school district after ten and fifty, ten to fifty years, when the building is still relatively due for use by the school district.
And I'm sorry, I'll ask you to wrap up.
One more sentence. MICA reverts to the city after fifty to eighty years, when the building is much older and the city will be responsible for managing or selling it, thus forfeiting public park land forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Judith.
Thank you. Judith Rome, 7365 Southeast 38th Street. I'm speaking here tonight as a citizen for my heart and not as a representative of any of the several organizations that I belong to. It is a difficult time when two passions of mine are at odds with each other. After my retirement in 2002, I turned to photography and jewelry making for my creative outlet. I also became intensely interested in saving and restoring the parks and open spaces on the island. As an Autobahn member, I learned the value of good habitat for our birds and wildlife. I am now a Mercer Island Park steward. It gives me great pleasure to do monthly surveys of the birds in the wetland area of Luther Burbank Park. Over eight years of data have been collected and used by our Parks Department as well as Mountains to Sound. And for years, I pulled ivy and blackberries in several of our parks until my shoulder gave out and required surgery. I am very grateful for the council that has budgeted money for restoration and maintenance of our parks. They are heavily used by all of us, music lovers, theater lovers, dog walkers, bird watchers. So, when MICA emerged and proposed a cultural arts center, I was very pleased for Mercer Island. I had been watching the progress of a similar plan on Vashon Island, on land next to the Blue Heron Gallery. Fortunately for them, their land was not on wetland or parkland, and fortunately for them, their financing backing was complete before construction began. The current design of MICA has bloomed into a building too large for the site of the recycling center, the land originally designated as a possible site and originally presented to the public. The design now encroaches beyond the recycling center's boundaries into Mercerdale Park, a precedent that I don't like to see. And the recycling center did not include bicentennial park, the little but important strip where the flagpole now stands. I cannot pretend to know all the legalities, regulations, and hoops to jump through in getting a permit to build on this land. I just know what my heart tells me is wrong. I hate to see people polarized over two wonderful disciplines, the arts and the parks. I hate to be bullied into choosing one over the other. The parks belong to the people of Mercer Island. Parkland is not free land to be given away. MICA needs to be scaled down to fit the land designated for it, or it needs to find a better site, one that offers parking and one that can accommodate the ambitions, the ambitious design of the three theaters. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Sybil Glasby and I'm the Director of Housing Development for Imagine Housing. First, I would like to thank the city of Mercer Island for your ongoing support of the Arch Housing Trust Fund. Because of your support, Imagine Housing has been able to create thirteen communities and provide homes for over thirteen hundred residents in Eastside communities. We currently operate Ellsworth House on Mercer Island, which provides an affordable home for fifty-nine senior households. Tonight, I'm asking that you continue to support the Arch Housing Trust Fund and recommend that your funding that was provided in 2015 to the trust fund be authorized to be used for Athene, our affordable senior housing community in Kirkland. The development of Athene will create ninety-one apartments that are affordable to seniors with very low incomes. We currently have a waitlist of about thirty seniors at Ellsworth here on Mercer Island and we're hopeful that some of those seniors may be interested in relocating to Kirkland. The waitlist for senior housing is long, there's very little turnover, and it could be many years. So, we're asking that you support the Arch Housing Trust Fund recommendation and help us create ninety-one affordable senior housing units. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Liz Sanderson and my heart and my home are in Mercer Island. And, you know, I just like to have my own opinion. And I have been a proponent of parks my whole life. I grew up in Wisconsin where my grandfather was on the Aldo Leopold Foundation Original Board and I planted a thousand trees my whole life, every year. I've been on the Pioneer Park Board and I've done other things, but my personal experience with the mom hat and with my experience in arts and as a retired lawyer is I've done my homework, I'm very much in favor of MICA. I could tell you a lot of reasons why. I brought my fun glasses because I believe the heart of the city is downtown. I believe that what all of you are doing is very visionary. I really support all the work and the effort that's gone in to get this far. I don't know what else I can say, except I think it can give us a beautiful downtown with opportunities for multi-generational arts. I think arts and parks go together and I think the level of the community will even become higher and I couldn't be more proud to have two kids graduate from school here. So, with all due respect to all of my background in land and parks, I think this is a wonderful use of parks. And by the way, I was the editor for the desk book of Public Private Lands. Trying to find my copy, but thank you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Jackie Dunbar. I live at 7116 82nd Avenue Southeast. And my specific comments are concerning from the MICA 2015 Annual Report. In a casual review of the MICA 2015 Annual Report received in my mailbox last week, my first impression was that the building was up and running and all the pictures seemed to confirm my impression. However, in taking a closer look, I realized that this was the proposed MICA building that the Mercer Island City Council was currently negotiating with concerning the land south of the Farmers Insurance Company, commonly referred to as the recycling center. The actual recycling center has a very small footprint and much more land is needed to be able to build a $25 million building on that site. The backside of the cover page under the title facility contained information about the cost of the building, which was 25 million, and the financial commitments that the city must agree with. What I did not find in that report was any mention of the operating costs, the $25 million building MICA will incur on an ongoing basis. Resident users were listed, but with all due respect and using financial considerations only, will this, will these groups be able to support the ongoing operations of a $25 million building? So, my question to you is, who is responsible if MICA is not able to meet their monthly, quarterly, and annual expenses? Do the citizens of Mercer Island occur any liability and if so, how much? I think the answers to these questions are vital to every taxpayer on Mercer Island and should be answered by the Mercer Island City Council in a way that's transparent and easily accessible by everyone and not those citizens who are just able to come to city council meetings. The city has a website and I think it should be used for situations like this, so all the citizens on Mercer Island can understand what's going on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Nancy Hewitt-Speth. I live at 8320 Southeast 34th Street. As a former member of the Board of Youth Theater Northwest and having had a child who took classes and performed with them for years, I am, and I'm a teacher and a nurse and I still substitute doing both of those jobs for the school district, which makes me very much aware of how necessary these arts are to children and how they keep kids in school. and how they keep kids in school. When they're not interested, whereas my daughter had a lot of teasing and didn't want to go to school, basically because I was told by a male teacher she was too pretty to go to school, and the boys harassed her. So one of the things that kept her there was the ability to go to youth theater and keep her combined and enjoying with her classmates. I know this is true for many, many kids. It's the arts and it's the sports that keep a ton of kids in school. And I think that's far more important than anything else. I do believe that the arts and the park go together, and I do believe that MICA's place in the park will have much less impact than people are imagining. I think it's going to be a beautiful and wonderful thing for all of us, and we have to think of the children first, because it's for them.
Thank you.
My name is Winston Addis. I don't live in Mercer Island, but I'm here representing the Russian Chamber Music Foundation of Seattle, which is one of the founding partners that will be headquartered here in Mercer Island after the MICA is open and up and running. For us, it's a win-win. We see it as a win-win. It gives us a base of operations, but what it gives to you is what we can bring. We do very high-level performance. We bring artists from around the world. We do a lot of events in Seattle, but we also have done quite a few in Mercer Island. And we'll probably do more in Mercer Island once we're located in Mercer Island. It's, we also have activities for kids, outreach activities. There'll be master classes. There'll be all kinds of things, very high-end stuff. This community certainly can afford it and deserves it, in my opinion, to have a performing arts center that's very high-end. And I, I'm a retired educator. I've worked with kids all my life. My own kids were active in music. That's part of the world I live in, is the world of classical music as well. We're just one of many organizations, however, that are going to make this thing work. And I don't, I can't speak to the technicalities and the process and all that stuff, but I can tell you that this is going to be a great thing for Mercer Island and for all the people that live here, beyond Mercer Island as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Alma Borbe, and my address is two-four-three-eight Seventy-First Avenue Southeast, Mercer Island. And I am here tonight on behalf of concerned citizens of Mercer Island Parks. First, I would like to share a quote about parks and open space from our former president Lyndon B. Johnson. "Once our natural splendor is destroyed, it can never be recaptured; and once man can no longer walk with beauty or wander at nature, his spirit will wither and his sustenance be wasted." So tonight, I would like to share with you that members of this organization have prepared an initiative to protect Mercer Island Parks and that we will submit it to the city clerk this week. This initiative to protect parks ensures that our community and future generations will continue to walk with beauty or wander at nature, which our parks and open space provide. Now, this initiative is not new to us as a community in the country. I was here last month on January nineteenth, and I spoke with you about the initiative that started back in nineteen sixty-six that the federal government established itself called Section four F. I also testified in front of the Parks Conservation Board. It's also consistent, this initiative, with Land and Water Conservation Fund, also called six F. And it's also based on the most recent Seattle Parks Initiative, Section Initiative Forty-two, which is now in place. So in essence, the initiative to protect our parks will require you, us, the city, that we cannot sell, transfer, lease, or change a park use to a non-park use unless all the conditions below are met. The city council holds a public hearing regarding the necessity of the transaction. The city council enacts an ordinance finding that their infraction is necessary because there is no reasonable and practical alternative. And last and most importantly, that the city replaces converted parkland with equivalent value, function, location in the vicinity. I re-support MICA, this organization. We believe, however, that it does warrant a replacement of the parklands for now and for future generation. Now, to be successful, we do need three thousand voter signatures by the end of May. So we urge our voters, our voters in the community, parks are irreplaceable and invaluable. Park enhances the beauty and sustainability of our community. Park provides exercise for the mind and body. Parks provides habitat for wildlife. Parks also contributes to the economic value of island properties. So we must act now. Because development pressures that encroach and build on parklands will only continue and escalate. We need volunteers and donations to collect signatures. Please contact us at protectmi parks at gmail dot com. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Don't worry, I'm not talking about MICA.
Welcome.
Tracy Gramvois, eight-four-four-zero, Southeast Eighty-Second Street. Thank you for your service to all islanders. I think we can all agree that regardless of the topic, the words we choose to use can make a huge difference. In January, you unanimously voted on a legislative agenda which included support for a, quote, "Public Records Act," quote, unquote, bill. This support was not based on actual bill language, but rather the words of a third-party organization, stating that the bill would be about, quote, "strengthening the Public Records Act in response to changing technology and burdensome requests," unquote. So I realize that you're all very busy, so I thought I'd give you an update on where that bill is now. House Bill twenty-five-seventy-six, Concerning Public Records Act Requests to Local Agencies. There was no Senate companion bill. So this bill, twelve pages, instead of supporting open and transparent government, actually would allow limits on the amount of monthly time local agencies spend responding to requests, and it would require or allow prioritization of requests. It's not exactly how the bill was proposed to you. This bill died in the House, and unless it is necessary to implement the budget, it will not be revived in this legislative session. So I ask if you would sign a contract without reading the actual language, perhaps in your personal capacity, but I would hope that as your capacity as a city council member, that you wouldn't put the citizens at such grave risk. So it is my hope that next year, when you work on your legislative agenda, that it will be based on actual bill language rather than hopes and dreams. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like me to leave this? Does anybody want to read it?
Leave it with the clerk, if you would, and she'll distribute it. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Distinguished council members, distinguished deputy mayor. You know, in the past, I've spoken to you about some concepts, and I'd like to return to two of those tonight. Principally, one that I call the foot-in-the-door theory and the other which I called as group think. The foot-in-the-door theory shows how agreement on a small issue can lead to a point where there is extreme pressure to agree with a more elaborate issue than originally conceived and with consequences not originally considered. I'd like to go to the very end of my remarks just to make sure that, I won't go to the end of my remarks because I've lost a page. The concerned citizens for Mercer Island support a performing arts center on Mercer Island, and we perform, or we support youth theater northwest. What we don't support is putting them in Mercerdale Park. Now, to go back to my remarks, the case of a location of a performing arts center in Mercerdale Park demonstrates both of the behaviors I've described to you, group think and the foot-in-the-door theory. And the first, a concept was approved with just a little thing. Well, this really isn't a big thing to do. We just do this and do something else. And now we've gotten to a point where we say, well, you know, we've led them along, and they spent so much money. We've just got to approve this thing now. That is the foot-in-the-door theory and how it goes. Interestingly, such actions are similar to a court case, Columbia Riverkeeper versus Port of Vancouver. The court case reviewed the importance of what is called the snowballing effect of such decisions. The court case addressed the proposition that the snowballing inertia generated by the lease agreement effectively forecloses full consideration of alternative possibilities and constitutes a separate violation to BAC one ninety-seven point one. The court case then quoted from a seminal state Supreme Court decision which noted, "When government decisions may have such snowballing effect, decision-makers need to be apprised of the environmental consequences before the project pick up momentum, not after." And the group think concept, it is evident that there is a great social pressure on the city council to approve a performing center for the arts in Mercerdale Park, even though rationally it cannot be justified. A brief developed by the concerned citizens for Mercer Island Parks provided to each of you shows the landside erosion and seismic hazards, a faulty delineation study, and inconsistencies with the GMA. This is similar to the Heinz property issue, except in this case, the council had the foresight to rescind its original approval of its exclusion from the moratorium.
Carrie, I'll ask you to wrap up, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'm pleased to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hey. Ira Appleman, four-four-three-six, Fern Cruff Road. I'm speaking for myself and as President of the Mercer Island Community Council and nearly fifteen-year-old Washington nonprofit corporation. I know that today, the city council and staff received a memo from concerned citizens for Mercerdale Park on the MOU, which is on tonight's agenda, and I incorporate that memo by reference in my comments. I agree that statutes and case law require that SEPA needs to be done before a lease is negotiated. I disagree that the current proposed MOU with attached lease incorporated meets legal standards. The MOU with attached incorporated lease limits alternatives, which is not allowed under SEPA and associated case law. It doesn't matter what you call it, an MOU or a conditional lease, it still restricts alternatives. It's an action, and so violates SEPA. The courts have found that even if the lease is contingent on fulfilling certain conditions, it still violates SEPA. If the city, before doing SEPA, acts in a way that locks it into an action, taking it down a path to an action sometimes called "snowballing effect", it violates legal requirements. That's what I think Councilmember Grous was doing when during the discussion of adding MICA Mercerdale to the survey. Councilmember Grous argued against the addition because what would you do with the information if islanders didn't want buildings in Mercerdale? According to Grous, the city council's already made that decision, which, of course, violates SEPA and associated case law. MICA Board President John Gordon Hill put out a notice recently of this meeting saying, "MICA has worked with city staff," a quote, "MICA has worked with city staff to draft a memorandum of understanding which states that council will approve the lease agreement upon completion of the SEPA review. That agreement is exactly what state law prohibits before SEPA is completed. I request that if the council still insists on going forward with this project without a vote of islanders or a survey, that it proceed with SEPA but not execute the MOU. Since by his own admission, Councilmember Grous has already made his decision to support MICA in Mercerdale Park, his presence either in council chambers or elsewhere taints the impartiality of the process, and he should be disqualified from participating in any way on the disposition of MICA and Mercerdale Park."
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Dwayne Matthews. I'm a fifty-year island resident. The year before we moved to the island, Mercer Island acquired a hundred and twenty acres down in the south end called Pioneer Park, which we still have. It's a beautiful piece of three forty-acre tracts and gives people in Mercer Island plenty of room to walk around in the natural atmosphere. But I'm also a big fan of MICA, even though I have no children who have participated or will, or had to have any grandchildren. And in all likelihood, when it is built, I will probably not be a resident myself. But what I do want to express is my faith in the council to study this matter and apply a reasonable, a good judgment to it to arrive at their decision. So I have no, I don't see any reason why the citizens should vote on everything. That's not the kind of government we have. We're not a democracy, true democracy. We're a constitutional republic, which means that we elect people like yourselves to make these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Burnell Goldberg, five-two-three-two, Eighty-Eighth Avenue, Southeast. Thank you for hearing our comments tonight. I have four kids who I've put through Mercer Island schools. Two are still in the schools, middle school and high school. I, as you know, MICA's board is made up of caring Mercer Island citizens who are also experts in the design, construction, funding, and operation of an arts center. Last month, we introduced ourselves to you one by one, so you can get to know us better. It took a couple hours. We're not doing that tonight. The board has given me the great honor to talk on their behalf tonight. Many board members are here, so if you have follow-up questions, we'll be able to answer them easily. We are poised at an important moment in our island's history. Three years ago, YTN lost its home. And now, we all sit here tonight together considering the creation of a cultural focal point on the island. For all of our citizens, children, youth, adults, seniors, MICA will become a cherished institution, a jewel in our midst. A task force from the city, MICA and independent consultants studied multiple locations. Mercerdale Park is it. I love parks, too. We have a gorgeous, incredibly functional design at the very edge of the park that protects and enhances the park, avoids wetlands, and replaces the abandoned recycling center with three stages and meeting spaces for our citizens. Our operating plan was created by experts with input from our resident user groups and benchmarked against comparable facilities nationwide. We have a team in place and adequate finances to continue to promptly and thoroughly address any and all open issues. We have briefed our city and community individually in public forums, on our website, in social media, and yes, in this beautiful annual report that we all received recently. We have addressed every question and concern and hereby commit to continue to do so. Many other communities have these sorts of facilities largely funded, built, and operated by government. MICA represents a new model of public-private collaboration. I'm asking this esteemed council at this moment, tonight, to do everything in its power to make MICA a dream come true. We have a Herculean task in front of us. We must raise upwards of twenty-five million dollars. Our nation and community is just emerging from the Great Recession. Many island donors already have meritorious giving priorities outside of our community. I hate asking people for money. Please don't make this harder for us by giving anyone a reason to hesitate to help. Be a friend of this project, please, not a foe. To the few voices of dissent, we respect your right to voice your opinions, to air your concerns. It is now time to let the city and its excellent staff do its job as set out by law. Let's let the professionals do their work. So tonight, you've already had two unanimous votes. I ask you for a third unanimous thumbs-up vote on this so that we can now go out and raise the money we need to make MICA a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, with that, I close public comments and offer my thanks to both the MICA folks and the concerned citizens who concentrated their comments into just a few statements that spoke for others, and that's much appreciated. And we probably get out at a reasonable hour this evening as a result, so thank you. Okay, we move now to consent calendar. We have payables, payroll, minutes from February first, and agenda bills, two agenda bills from Arch. I know there's a plan to pull one of those agenda bills, but let's have a motion for the consent calendar first, and then we'll do that.
Move to approve the consent calendar?
Sir, second. Okay, moved and seconded. Anyone want to remove anything?
I'd like to remove Agenda Bill five-one-five-five.
Okay. So we will move that to our first item of regular business, and the consent calendar now includes payables, payroll, minutes from February first, and Agenda Bill five-one-five-six. now includes payables, payroll, minutes from February first, and Agenda Bill 5156. All in favor of the consent calendar, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. We'll move to Agenda Bill 5155, Arch 2016 Administrative Budget and Work Program. Benson, I'll let you go ahead and tee this up since you've pulled it. I know we have Arthur Sullivan from Arch here this evening to answer questions, and Allison, we have, it looks like you're all set to go, too. So, yeah?
Um, I'm going to...
Benson.
Yeah, I appreciate the staff getting back to some of my questions, and so really the only one I have is really a request maybe for clarification on page six of Exhibit One of the Agenda Bill. I guess, you know, I don't know if I provided the quote. I guess I did provide the quote, but I guess it's the language that basically says, "Continue to explore opportunities for catalyst projects in transit-oriented neighborhoods such as," goes on, and then goes on, "central Mercer Island that include affordable housing and other features that help implement neighborhood plan objectives. This includes efforts to identify one or two properties that would be appropriate for the ready fund." So again, I just want a clarification about what this actually means. Again, it was sort of, you know, it's not buried, but it was, just reading it, anytime there's a reference to Mercer Island, it just sort of catches my eye. So I just wanted, if you can clarify what this means, and obviously, you know, my, the question about central Mercer Island is that the town center that we're talking about? And also, when I see the language about exploring different projects, I just wanted to know what that actually meant.
Arthur.
Hi, my name's Arthur Sullivan, Program Manager of Arch. In reference to that, the work program element there, that is an example of where we may do work if invited by local city staff in the area. The general, it's sort of marrying that work program item two or three things. One is the ready fund, which is a land revolving loan fund, which the Arch cities were one of the public funder, so you have funds in that program. That program is designed for transit-rich mixed-use community centers, and you have part of that. It also includes both acquisition of land for redevelopment, as well as potentially preserving existing housing. So probably the reason we use that language is that you do have some existing rental housing that's right on the edge of your town center, not technically part of it, but maybe that's something that might be of interest to the city under the program. So that's probably why a little bit more generic description than saying explicitly "town center." We would only do work in any particular city if we were invited by the council or the city staff to say, "Hey, we know about this program. We have an area of the community. We'd like to have this program try to land in our community." That did happen in Bellevue. It did happen in Kirkland, where, you know, a couple of years ago, we finished redevelopment of a park and ride to include housing on that with affordable housing. So we would only do work in this particular program at the invite of the city, and as we went through this, because this is one of the eligible areas, staff was comfortable with us, including that example for Mercer Island. We don't have a specific project at this point in time, but that would be something, again, if some opportunity came around, we're more than happy to help the city try to make that program work for you.
Allison, did you want to add anything to that, or?
No, I agree with what Arthur said. I think there's a number of, like Ellsworth House is right outside of town center, right outside the boundary. There's a number of other apartments currently kind of at the fringes of town center that are the more affordable housing, and so just looking at opportunities to continue to preserve those units.
Okay. Benson, you feel?
Again, I just was stating clarification.
Yes. And I, I mean, I share the sense, central Mercer Island to many of us would mean sort of Forty-Fourth down to Forty-Fifteth, or something like that, the middle part of the island rather than the northern part. Okay. Benson, did you wish to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay. Thank you, Arthur.
Oh, thank you. I'd like to move to approve the Arch 2016 Administrative Budget and Work Program and authorized expenditure of $30,784 for Mercer Island's contribution to the 2016 Arch Administrative Budget.
Moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Arthur, for sticking around this evening, much appreciated, and Allison for being available, too. We will move now to Agenda Bill 5158, Memorandum of Understanding with Mercer Island Center for the Arts, MICA, Regarding a Performing Arts Center and Related Environmental Impacts Review. Carrie Sand, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm Carrie Sand, her City Attorney, and as you said, I'm presenting tonight on Agenda Bill 5158, the Proposed Memorandum of Understanding with the Mercer Island Center for the Arts, known as MICA, regarding a lease for a performing arts center and related environmental impacts review. So as stated in your Agenda Bill, the council has previously met and discussed the lease at length on November 16th, 2015, and that related Agenda Bill is numbered 5133, and also on January 19th, 2016, and that related Agenda Bill is 5149. So the council has spent considerable time discussing a lease, and as reflected in Exhibit Two, that's the current working draft of the lease, and I will discuss that more in a minute. First, I want to further highlight the purpose of the Memorandum of Understanding, which is attached as Exhibit One to your Agenda Bill. So the purpose of this MOU is to establish a process for a thorough and meaningful environmental review pursuant to the State Environmental Policy Act, otherwise known as SEPA, and that is codified in our state law at Chapter 43.21(c). So SEPA requires environmental review prior to governmental decision regarding a lease of public land. And so the council's prior discussions regarding the lease, those were very informative about the substantive provisions of the lease, but before the council could move forward with approving and then ultimately authorizing the city manager to execute the lease, that triggered SEPA review. So what happened since our last discussion of this on January 19th is city manager and Development Services Director Scott Greenberg and I, we met with MICA representatives and talked about how to go forward and accomplish the SEPA review ahead of consideration of the lease. And so what we came up with was the draft Memorandum of Understanding attached as Exhibit One, and again, that establishes the process for a thorough and meaningful environmental review. So the three focus areas of that review are going to be traffic and parking, wetland and buffer mitigation, and geologic hazards review. And in particular, that's going to focus on the impacts to the hillside to the west and slope stabilization. I want to underscore some important points about the Memorandum of Understanding. First of all, entering into this Memorandum of Understanding is not an action under SEPA. As discussed in the Arena case, it really is a decision on an upcoming decision. So it will not limit or control the council's future decision regarding the lease, but it will inform that decision by, again, setting forth the process of environmental review to be undertaken by city staff in the meanwhile, in order to really understand the impacts of the proposed construction of the center at the former recycling center site in the northwest corner of Mercerdale Park, to understand how does that impact the environment. It's a preliminary step, and it is not tantamount to project approval. So it does not trigger the snowball effect that's been referred to, not only in the Arena case, but in other similar cases. It indicates the party's intent to move forward in good faith, but it does not limit or control the council's future decision on the proposed MICA lease. And as stated in the Agenda Bill as well as in the Memorandum of Understanding, the full SEPA review will include, but is not limited to, comprehensive traffic impact analysis, identification of adequate parking to meet the city code, identification of onsite environmental conditions, potential significant adverse impacts, and those are terms of art under SEPA, and possible mitigation actions. We'll be looking at mitigation plan proposed by MICA for the nearby Category Three wetland, and again, impacts related to geologic hazards. As stated in the MOU, the city's exercise of its SEPA substantive authority will not be limited, and MICA will pay all costs incurred by the city as part of the SEPA review, including any necessary peer review. And the peer review will be undertaken by qualified expert consultants selected by DSG staff to ensure the environmental assessment is fair, competent, and objective. Now, I want to point out in particular, drawing your attention to the MOU at Exhibit One. Unfortunately, there are a couple typos in here, and I wanted to point those out to you. So we caught the reference to the southwest corner of Seventy-seventh Avenue, Southeast and Southeast Thirty-second Street in Recital A on page four of Exhibit One, but we did not catch on page five.
Carrie, just if you could help us, there are two sets of page numbers appearing there. One's at the, together with the exhibit number, and then the other's embedded within the MOU.
So within the MOU...
Help us make sure we are where you are so we can follow along.
Sure. Within the MOU, I'm on page two of four, and that's page five of Exhibit One. And I'm in Understandings, and I'm looking at Paragraph Two Location. So Paragraph Two Location, again, contains a typo referencing the southwest corner of the park, as opposed to the southwest corner of the intersection, so that needs to be changed to the northwest corner of the park. So that's one change. And then in Section Three, again, on the same page, under Environmental Review, it's the ninth line down. It refers to geotechnical hazards, and it should instead refer to geologic hazards. So we'll be looking at geotechnical reports to assess geologic hazards. And again, that was an inadvertent typo. Going back to the substance, however, of particular significance, and like the Arena case that involves city of Seattle, King County, and hedge fund manager and basketball enthusiast Chris Hansen, the MOU is merely a decision about the process, the environmental review process, that will be used to make a decision about the lease. So I hope that is clear for everyone. It's intended to be binding and enforceable, again, as to the environmental review process. And it is not creating any kind of foregone conclusion or otherwise hamstringing the city council as far as whether you want to go forward with a lease in the future. So I just want to be really clear that it does not create a perclusive effect in that way, and that's why we believe it passes muster and would survive legal scrutiny, just as the MOU did for the Arena, first involving Seattle and King County. So I also wanted to point out that in Section Two, Location, this is again on page two of the MOU, page five of Exhibit One, there's express authority saying the city hereby authorizes MICA to apply for SEPA review at its sole cost, and the city will evaluate this location as part of SEPA review for the center. And I just wanted to point this out because I received input from Development Services Group Director Scott Greenberg about this. I wanted clarification. Could we dispense, or could the council dispense with this MOU, and could the SEPA process otherwise go forward? And one of the things he pointed out is that in our permit application forms, we do require property owner signature or property owner authorization, and so MICA would in some way need the authorization that's included in the Section Two of the MOU to proceed because it is city-owned property. They are not the owner, and so that's part of what this MOU accomplishes, is it expressly authorizes that. Now, that authorization could be given in another means. It could be given by motion of the council or some other way, but again, it's another purpose served by this Memorandum of Understanding. Of course, it spells out the SEPA process. It talks about the focus areas, and it definitely clearly puts the burden on MICA to pay for the costs, including peer review. And in Section Four, again, I'm on that same page, page two of four of the MOU, page five of the exhibit, it states that with regard to the lease agreement, that only after the SEPA review is completed and the environmental review is satisfied, the council may approve the lease. I point out the word "may" because that is a discretionary word. Again, it goes back to my earlier comments that it's within the council's discretion whether to move forward at that point. And also, I've been asked some questions, and you heard during appearances someone speak to the issue of the phrase substantially the form at Exhibit One. So that's actually referenced three times in this document, and I wanted to point that out because the version of the lease that's attached, as you know, is based on the deep dive that the council did at the January 19th meeting, where we spent about two hours going systematically through the lease, and I was given direction about various provisions of the lease and instructed to change certain provisions. And to the extent that either the SEPA review brings up issues that cause the council to want to further revise the lease, or other information is brought forward to the council's attention as part of ongoing due diligence and intervening time, I just wanted to make clear that the intent was that we capture as a baseline all the work that we've done on the lease to date. But if there are substantial changes, not just fixing typos, like the two typos I called out, one about the northwest corner of the park and the other about geological, or geologic instead of geotechnical, but if there are really substantive changes, then the council doesn't have to approve the lease in the form attached. They can further amend it, and I just wanted to point that out. Again, we have the word "may." It's discretionary, and it's intended to maintain flexibility. So I wanted to point that out. And with regard to your motion language, now I'm looking at page three of your Agenda Bill. There's proposed motion language there, and I wanted to just point out that if council wants to discuss or direct me to further amend the MOU or the lease, either document, then you will want to note in the motion as amended. So at this point, I'm happy to address any questions the council may have, and we'll turn it back to the council for discussion.
Thank you, Carrie. Let's go ahead and go to questions. Dave, I know you had a high-level question you were posing to me earlier, and maybe you want to start? Go to whoever, if you're on.
All right. It's a lucky draw. Thanks so much, Carrie. So two, two questions, and they are rather high-level. You used the phrase, "It informs the action as it relates to the environmental impact" rather than "it's an action itself." Do you think that the MOU gives us any more information about environmental, parking, wetlands, or puts us in a position to get more information than we would if MICA were to simply navigate the SEPA process on their own? Would we come back with a richer compendium of information?
The MOU is clear in setting the expectations of the parties regarding how the SEPA process will be undertaken, but likely the end result is very similar to the standard SEPA review process undertaken for most development projects. So the city of Mercer Island routinely undertakes SEPA review for development permits and development projects.
Sure, sure. But the, having the MOU in place doesn't necessarily enhance the results, in your opinion?
No, I don't think that it necessarily enhances the result. It just sets more particulars around the process.
Okay. And then, can I ask my last high-level question, which is, what is the benefit to the city of Mercer Island? I understand the benefit for MICA, but what would be the benefit to the city for having the MOU in place?
Well, it does create, again, clarity around what the parties are expecting, but frankly, this document was prepared at the request of MICA. this document was prepared at the request of MICA. We sat down with them and talked about how to move forward with this, and this is the document that they certainly were advocating for, and that we worked with them to create and prepare, again, in a way that we thought would not only create a very meaningful environmental review process, but would pass legal muster.
And that in itself doesn't raise the concern of snowballing that we heard in some of the public comments?
No, it doesn't. And again, I say that because entering into the MOU does not bind the council with regard to the lease. So, the council may choose to execute the lease in substantially the form attached, or it may choose not to do that. It's within the council's discretion.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Okay. Other questions? Benson?
Carrie, I have, you know, obviously, you know that everybody here was provided with a number of materials from the concerned citizens. And I just, again, a kind of a high-level question regarding the question about compliance of the ordinances, the city ordinances in relation to GMA. Can you elaborate on that, or give us some context here?
Certainly. The Growth Management Act sets forth a schedule regarding cities' implementation of development regulations, including critical areas ordinances. And the city's critical areas ordinance was due for an update, and that update, according to the schedule set forth in the RCW, was scheduled for June 30, 2015, and that date has come and gone. And so, we are technically out of compliance with that schedule. However, the state law goes on to say, and I believe it's RCW 3670A .130 sub 7B, and what it says, because I've looked at it many times in the last 24 hours, what it says is that if the city is within 12 months of that scheduled date, that it is considered to be making substantial progress towards compliance. In other words, we are not in a place right now where we would be deemed out of step with that schedule. But it is definitely, in my view, a priority, and it is on the work plan, but it's not on the work plan for 2016 thus far, although we will likely be undertaking that work starting in 2016. I hope that answers your question.
Wendy?
Okay. So, I just want to be really clear. So, this is a decision to inform the decision. SEPA, in my understanding, is to help us understand the parameters of the proposed project. Can we do SEPA without an MOU? And if there are other alternatives to an MOU, like a letter of agreement or something? You mentioned there were other vehicles, perhaps? Could you elaborate a little more on what some other alternatives might be?
Sure. It sounds like I need to clarify my remarks from earlier. So, in answer to your question, SEPA review can be undertaken without entering into an MOU. However, the council would somehow need to authorize a SEPA review related to MICA's proposed use of parkland at Mercer Dale Park, because MICA's not the property owner, the City of Mercer Island is. So, what I was trying to explain is that the city council would somehow need to authorize that, and that does not have to be through the vehicle of an MOU, but that's the vehicle that MICA and the city were working with, and we agreed to that approach, and it seemed court-tested, based on the arena case, so it seemed like a reasonable approach to take. Well, agreements can have many names. I mean, this one is titled a memorandum of understanding. You could have a letter of agreement. We've had two previously related to MICA. There could be a motion. There are many different ways that the council could, fundamentally, the main component is authorizing this to happen, again, because we're the owner of the land, not MICA. But the SEPA review can take place simply because if that authority is given, MICA can ask for that review to happen, and I think it makes a lot of sense, in addition to being compliant with the law. It just makes a lot of sense to undertake that review sooner rather than later in the project timeline.
Other questions?
Yeah, I don't know if I'll do two rounds. On the SEPA, I'm a SEPA neophyte, so this is a SEPA 101 question. Part of it, the environmental stuff we've covered, and it's critically important, but it also talks about traffic and parking. MICA doesn't have parking, there's all sorts of questions. What are the criteria of evaluating parking as it relates to MICA that would cause that element of the SEPA process to be pass or fail?
I think for this question, I'm going to defer to Development Services Director Scott Greenberg.
Thank you. Well, one of the criteria that we would look at is, MICA has a transportation consultant on board, the Transpo Group. The city has our peer review consultant, and we would ask MICA to provide as much information as they currently have regarding traffic and parking. They can only give as much information as they currently have, so we would just have to evaluate the environmental impacts of the proposal based on the currently available information.
So theoretically, if they come and tell you our current plan is not to have parking on site, and we're going to make a plan in the future with somebody in agreement, how does that play into the SEPA, your analysis?
SEPA statutes allow SEPA analysis to be phased, so if, trying to explain, if they don't have any information about parking at all, then we might call out as a mitigating measure in our SEPA determination that prior to, say, prior to issuance of a building permit, or prior to signing of a lease, or some trigger there, that MICA has to present a parking plan that will meet city requirements or satisfy certain requirements. Another thing that could happen is that the parking plan could be provided, the city would review it, and then say, well, this is going to create additional environmental impact that wasn't anticipated with the first SEPA determination. We now have to do an addendum to the SEPA determination, or, in other words, reissue a SEPA determination to include this new environmental information. That's not a common thing that happens in cities, but it does happen.
And while I have you, if I ask one more question of you, Scott. Last time, we talked about additional projects for your group. It was quite at capacity, and we had some residential stuff. Tell them about your, who's going to be doing this work on your staff, and to what extent do you think it's likely you'll go outside to supplement your tight staff?
I think it depends on the timing of when MICA submits the application. We could request, as the city attorney mentioned, that the MOU would obligate MICA to pay for the costs of the environmental review, including peer review. If it came at a time where our staff was busy working on other city council priorities or other permits, we could ask MICA to pay for additional planning assistance. Maybe we would hire a consultant to do the SEPA review for us, and we would manage the process. Or depending, again, on timing and workload, we might just handle it in-house.
Other questions? Scott, thank you.
Yeah, I have more questions for...
So, I want to talk about the termination of the MOU, Carrie. What kind of triggers that? Because we've talked about why we're having this MOU, and we're having the MOU because we're not going to, we can't sign the lease now, and the MOU is requested by MICA because they want to go out and raise funds. But the way the MOU writes, it's as if when the SEPA review is done, we go in to do the lease, whereas I think there's an option that says, okay, if you're now able to raise the funds, let's have a benchmark for the MOU and then go to the lease after some benchmark of fundraising is achieved.
The MOU does not currently contain such a benchmark triggered by funding levels, just to be clear. That's not in the MOU as written. Right, okay.
Just suggesting we could.
And certainly, the council could entertain that idea. I just wanted to point out, again, on Page 2 of the MOU, Page 5 of Exhibit 1, in Section 1, Purpose and Term, with regard to the term, it states it will terminate upon the earlier of completion of this SEPA review and related appeals and/or appeal periods. It's important that we understand the outcome of any appeals as part of that SEPA process. Or, the effective date of the lease. So, once the lease is executed, this will terminate. Or, C is in the event of a material adverse condition as specified in Section 5, and that relates to the financial condition of MICA, if they were to become bankrupt or insolvent or otherwise disincorporate, or if the parties were unable to agree on any alternatives to addressing any of those material adverse conditions. We wanted to give MICA an out for that worst-case scenario. But one thing I didn't mention that I want to add regards SEPA timing and the timing of that review process. I've also been asked, how long will it take? And the answer to that is, it will take as long as it needs to take. I can't give any kind of definite date. It just, it will take as long as it needs to take. So, that's an unknown.
Jeff, if anything else, you're on a roll there. No?
I don't know how I know.
Well, I didn't see anybody else waving a hand, so if you've got something else, you may continue, and otherwise, we'll move on to the next part of the proceedings here.
I still think I'd like to raise the idea of...
You know, basically, where I'm coming from is that I'd like us to start working on other projects, and that, well, I am a fan of MICA. They've got a lot of money to raise, and I want them to go out and do it, but I still have some things that we want to work on in the lease, and have time, and in the case, it takes a long time to raise money, and circumstances change. I think it's prudent in return of having this MOU in place, which allows them to go forth and, with confidence, fundraise, say, we'll come and do the lease at a moment in time when they've raised, say, half of the amount that they need to get to. So, that's my idea of the day. I don't know how to approach it in terms of this MOU or this process, because it's still my fourth council meeting.
Carrie, so I'll interject a little bit here and then hand it off to you. My sense would be that the language here gives us a great deal of flexibility to, at the conclusion of the SEPA process, do a lease, don't do a lease, change a lease, do as we see fit, which could certainly include what Jeff is proposing in terms of saying, well, we'll do the lease when we reach a certain funding milestone. Am I correct in understanding that we have that flexibility?
You are correct.
As things stand now?
The MOU is deliberately designed to preserve the council's options going forward. That's why it says "may." Again, a discretionary term as opposed to shall, which is mandatory. So, we deliberately chose "may" versus "will" or "shall." So, that is to preserve the council's discretion and maintain flexibility. And, you know, whether the council wants to entertain the idea proposed by Council Member Sanderson of having a fundraising milestone as the trigger point for execution of the lease, the council can discuss that tonight. You can wait and discuss it in the future after SEPA review. It's entirely within the council's discretion when to have that conversation.
Other questions? Kate, did you have one?
No.
No, okay. So, Benson, you had a number of questions, and I sort of got ahead of you by putting those, Carrie's responses to those, out to the full council. You were, I think, going to narrow that list. You want to pass out what you've got at this point?
Yes, please.
Yes, please. You're, oh, you're sending it to me? Okay, got it. Okay. Yes, exactly. Out to everybody. So, what Benson's done, so Carrie sent out a memo to all of us this afternoon, and do we all have copies of that at this point, or?
Two things. We were trying to be a little...
Yes, but this was the, the, yes, you've got it.
The three-page memo that came in.
Yes.
Okay.
And what I was attempting to do in asking Carrie to do that was to simply give us a structure for running through the questions that had been raised, so that we could move, kind of logically, from where we are to an endpoint this evening. I guess the question I would have for Carrie is, should we do this now, or should we do this after there's a motion? How would you like us to proceed so that it makes the most sense from your perspective?
I think it makes sense to have the discussion now, and then the motion can be reframed to say, you know, referring to the lease as amended, depending on the will of the council. So, let's go ahead and have that discussion now.
Okay. Yes.
So, one thing that I wanted to ask Benson, the first question says, "Section 2.1 of the lease." Is it fair to understand, then, that every question on these three pages pertains to the lease versus the lease and/or MOU?
Those pertain to the lease. And I, you know, I'm not personally, I defer to Carrie and certainly to the council. I mean, it sounds like there's flexibility time-wise that if we want to make changes or suggest changes, they can come after any kind of action that might be taken on the MOU. So, I, you know, again, don't know what the council wants to do, but I can, I just listed some questions. I made some suggested changes to the lease. There may be others, you know, again, you give somebody long enough to think about it, there's always something that might come up. But in any event, there sounds like, based on what the city attorney said earlier today, there's flexibility to suggest other changes in the future. Obviously, we're not really taking any action on the lease, per se, so.
That's right. You're not taking action on the lease. Again, I feel like I can't emphasize this point enough, but it bears repeating. The MOU is simply to make a decision about the SEPA review process, to inform a future decision, if any, regarding the lease. And I say "if any" in all seriousness, because it really is within the council's discretion moving forward whether or not to execute the lease.
So, would it be fair to suggest that we then put this on ice and have the conversation about this at a later date? Would that make sense to do? Because at that time, we'll also have other questions that...
Yes.
Okay.
I have another question. Sounds like we have time to at least find...
Okay, yeah. That was easy. So, I think at that point, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion. I've moved to authorize the city manager to execute an MOU with MICA and substantiate the form attached here, too, as Exhibit 1.
Second?
And that captures your corrections that are...
It does. I consider them insubstantial typographical errors, and I was very upfront about it, and so I think it's very clear that we're going to be changing southwest to northwest in reference to the location of the park or the proposed site within the park, and changing the reference to geotechnical to geologic.
Okay. Okay, so we have motion, and we have a second discussion. You want to kick this off?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for that. As the motion maker, you're prerogative to begin.
As Jeff said, we have spent a lot of time on this, and there's a reason we've spent a lot of time on it, because this is a potentially changing point in the history of Mercer Island in terms of what we're trying to do for this community in a way that nothing that I think I've worked on in the time I've been in this council would match. We have, we have some, we have phenomenal facilities in this city for education, for parks, for recreation. We used to have a youth theater, which no one would call phenomenal in terms of being a facility, but it was a phenomenal, and remains a phenomenal institution in what it did for my children and the children of many other islanders. And that institution is a... And that institution is at risk right now, and we all know that. It's only a matter of time before it leaves Mercer Island if we don't find a resolution to it. The people who have promoted Youth Theater Northwest saw this as an opportunity to go one step further. And that is to actually create a facility that would not only address the needs of our children, but would also address the needs of our seniors, of islanders of every age, providing a cultural institution that would provide performance spaces, would provide rehearsal spaces, would provide all kinds of enrichment opportunities, that would provide classes, that would provide something that this island doesn't have right now. So, they had a dream, and they spent the last two years working with this council and this city to try to move that dream forward. And it has not been easy. This is, anyone who's tried to realize a dream, he realizes it's not a simple experience to do. But here we are today on February 22nd, and we are at the next step in helping them reach the dream. But them, when you start thinking about them as us, because this is not, you know, Dave asked a question at one point, well, you know, you've got what MICA wants, and then you've got what the city wants. And I thought that was a concerning question, because I view what MICA wants as not being what a bunch of individuals want, to improve their own personal wealth or to provide classes for themselves. I mean, John Hill's kids are long graduated from Youth Theater Northwest and have established families on this island. Yeah, and his father, Harold, who's a major supporter of MICA, John's a longtime gone through Mercer Island. Yeah, they're doing it for this community. And everyone is involved in MICA, and you all heard them when they came a month ago. They're all doing it for this community. So, when we say, you know, how do we protect Mercer Island? And I turn around that question and say, how do we make sure we enhance Mercer Island? Because we have a group of citizens who've come forward and said, we're willing to enhance Mercer Island, and we want to form a partnership with the city to do that. How often does that happen? It never happens. And yet, they've done it, and they've put two years of their lives in so far, and their money and their time. And so, when you ask the question, how do we protect Mercer Island? This is how we protect Mercer Island, by continuing to support this project and making sure we approve this MOU. It's the next step in the process. You know, I've been accused of a whole bunch of things, including, once again, by our tonight, of being an unabashed supporter of this project. And yes, I'm an unabashed supporter of this project. And it's not because I'm getting anything out of it. It's not because my kids are long graduated and have, don't live on the island anymore, unfortunately. I'm doing this because, to the same reason I supported Peak, the same reason I supported the community center, the same reason I supported turfing the ball fields, because these are changes that make a difference in this community. It's changes to make a difference for your kids who are coming up, and Debbie's kids, and Wendy's kids, you know, the next generation of islanders that are coming up and grandchildren. These are defining changes that we have an opportunity to make. And so, I make no apologies for supporting this project, because I believe that in supporting this project, we are making a huge difference for this community. And hopefully, that's what we're going to continue doing tonight.
Okay, thank you. Others?
So, thanks for that speech. A couple of things. I think, I think I'm in support of the MOU, and this is why. Because I think to Carrie's point, wherever Carrie got off to, to Carrie's point, I think it does clearly delineate the responsibilities of everybody involved. And that way, when we get to the, to the point of a lease, there's no ambiguity about what should have happened, or who should have done what, or who should have paid for what. So, I like it from that standpoint. Thanks for the barbs in your speech, Dan, but the truth is, to characterize me as someone who's against the project or trying to hold it up is just inaccurate. You don't know how I feel about the project. I think there's a difference between being supportive of what could be a very good idea in the community. I think the MICA folks know that I think it could be a very good idea in the community. The difference is, I think there is a right way to go about things in a methodical manner, and I think there's a portion of the community that doesn't feel like the city council did that up to now. So, that's the difference. And I think we have a framework with the MOU that helps protect the people who are concerned about the park, which is not an insignificant group of folks. And when I ask for an advisory vote, it's because of that. I don't think we, as a council, have enough information about who wants what done with their public resources. And when I say, what do we need to do to protect Mercer Island, which actually weren't my words that I used, we're elected to look out for the entirety of Mercer Island, and that's what I think we're obligated to do through seeking all of the viewpoints and then make that decision. So, I think the MOU is a good idea. I think it frames up the relationship between the two parties, and it does something for MICA, which allows them to go and fundraise, allows them to stop going to city council meetings, which has got to be killing all of you, and go do what you need to do. And that's what I have to say about that, passing the torch.
Debbie, hand up, and then to Benson, or you want to pass on? Okay.
Well, I'm going to speak out in favor of the MOU, just as I have spoken out in favor of the lease. And for me, so much of the discussion has been about the concept of MICA, and it's also been about the realities of MICA as presented in terms of the programming it's offering in terms of the physical facilities, the location at the former recycle center. And again, I would just emphasize that I see this as an enhancement to the park. I do not see this as an either-or, but again, this is an extension of the park that brings new use, new communities, and new benefit in. So, to me, this MOU simply represents a change in course over the order in which we're addressing some of these issues. And ultimately, I think it can be a good thing, because there has been clear concern from many members of the public in terms of addressing the wetlands, the parking, the traffic mitigation, and the funding. And there was concern about whether or not the lease was coming in front of those rather than subsequent to digging into those details. So, you know, whether intentional or not, I think the sound legal advice from our council, and I think in concurrence too with MICA, is that the MOU needs to precede the lease. The MOU will give the community, will give MICA and the city and staff the opportunity to dig into those issues in advance of the lease. So, I see this as goodness. It will bring people along. It will be legally compliant. It will be a discovery process, but importantly also, it enables MICA to go forward with their fundraising. At least, that's my current understanding. So, I hope that is, in fact, the case. And if people could nod, that would, that would be great. Okay, good. Because I wanted to make sure I wasn't operating on any assumptions. So, again, I just, I support the MOU. I think this is goodness, and I'm pleased that the SEPA review assessment has come forward. It's going to give us the chance to answer questions and to allow MICA to get on with its fundraising. And I do hope that we can support this tonight.
Benson?
I'm going to speak in favor of the MOU. And I think it's important to recognize and remember that it has a very limited purpose, and it does provide a roadmap for parties to continue. And so, I think, you know, ultimately, if they are, if the SEPA review comes back and it's, conditions are satisfied, if, you know, at that point in time, you know, obviously, I still have concerns about the lease, and I will share that with the city attorney, and I have done that already. And, but, you know, that's another issue. I mean, I think right now, the MOU, again, is very limited in purpose. And, you know, at some point in time, we, as a city council, will continue to, well, obviously, we have to do our job, and that means balancing and weighing the different interests of different groups. And I think as Councilmember Wiesenthal stated, I think there is a large segment of the population that is very passionate, as we all are, about our parks. But we also have to weigh and balance the other interests that are out there. And so, whether that it's people who support YTN or people who support the arts, it's a difficult task that lies ahead of us. But I think as we gather more information, and the MOU is one that will help us gather more information, I think the city council will be in a position to use its judgment in making a decision regarding the lease when that comes up. So, again, I'm in support of the MOU, given its limited purpose.
Jeff?
I'm concerned about the MOU, primarily because I think SEPA can inform the size and the footprint of the proposal. I think, I think it will help address the parking, the traffic, the environmental concerns. And I feel like this MOU is another step forward without having enough of the information. So, I support the Dreamers, I support MICA, I want it on the recycling center. I don't know that I want it to be $25 million and 41,000 square feet. I'm struggling with what the correct mechanism would be. It sounds like I'm outnumbered anyway, so I just want to say that I'm looking forward to having the SEPA analysis done, whether a third-party person does it, whether we pay for it, whether MICA pays for it. I just want to know what the real possibilities are. I get the art of the possible, and I get Dreamers, but I want to know what we can do on that specific dirt, in that land, and with those constraints around the fire and the environmental and the parking and the traffic, all of the real dirty, in the weeds, in the wetlands issues that we need to have more information about. If it turns out we can't build a 14, a $25 million building, it's going to be a $15 million building. Whatever it is that we can do with what we find from SEPA is what we're going to do. And I'm on board with that. And I hope the lease, when we finally get to that, will reflect the information we get through the SEPA process. So, I have to say, and I hate to say it, I'm not supportive of the MOU. I want to go ahead with SEPA and then figure out the lease, because I don't know what you're raising money for, because we don't know how big it can be. We don't know where it can be. We have great plans, we have great analysis, but the SEPA analysis, the scientific work is what's going to drive the ultimate footprint and what's possible, right? So, for me, I just, I need more of that information before I can make that commitment. So, I get it. I'm willing to help, but I can't support the MOU as it stands without having the SEPA first. It's, to me, it's an action, and it's a decision that forms decision, but I feel like it's still premature.
Jeff?
Yeah, I'm gonna, and this is a tough one for me, too. I'm supportive of the MOU because I want to see, you know, this project go forward, if it can. My doom scenario is, of course, that it takes so long to get to where the project is feasible that YTN, who were, you know, doing a huge piece of this for Manny, can live long enough, and I don't have visibility onto that. And I hope and I wish you well. I'm going to take the MOU statements of Carrie at the strictest, you know, part, which is the "may," which is the flexibility that we have. My concerns are more in sort of the operating oversight in terms of understanding, you know, the feasibility. And to say, you know, I sort of add Dan and Dave together. We are both partner, and I want us to be partner, and put us in a position to be partner, work together. At the same time, a lease by its very nature is a two-party document that needs to be negotiated, kind of at an arm's length, give and take. We have fiscal responsibilities for the city, and we also have vibrancy, I'll call them responsibilities, for the city. The vibrancy part of the city makes me really want MICA to succeed and make it succeed in a timeframe that is fast enough that all of the parties that are going to go there that form the basis of the financial projections can actually, you know, can, can, it can still keep with the plan. And the financial piece of it says, I want us to work together to ensure that the projections that they've put forward and the studies that they've done, of which I've only seen sort of the cover sheet, are reasonable and that we're protecting the fiscal part of our city and the budget that we know is extremely tight. So, I'm trying to balance those two together. So, if this MOU allows, you know, MICA to go forward and raise money while at the same time allowing us to say when we're going to do the lease and what substantive things within the lease I still have issues with, then I say, yeah, let's go forward with the MOU and then discuss the other pieces.
And I'll simply add that, I'm going to borrow this from you, we can all appreciate the passion that was, has been demonstrated around our parks from concerned citizens and from others, putting together binders worth of information for this council to consider. You'll find multiple copies of that up here, and obviously, there have been other passionate statements. Our parks are precious. But we also can appreciate the tremendous passion, and Dan said it very well, of the, a dream of putting together an arts center that can be a tremendous opportunity for our children and into the future here. I believe that those are, that ultimately, an art center can be completely synergistic with our park, and so, I'm supportive of this concept. I think the MOU represents an intelligent path forward in terms of spelling out how the SEPA process will be undertaken, and so, I am supportive of that and hope that it goes forward. So, anyone feel like they need a second?
Is there, no, is there? Can we ask one?
Oh, and you haven't had a, you did have a chance at this, but you can certainly have another go at this, if you like.
No, I just want to ask a question. Is it possible or not?
Back in my day, somebody barked at me for going back to questions at this point. Personally, personally...
You said something so important, maybe.
But, but, but... That rarely happens. But, but I was going to, I was going to add as the end of that, that I have no such sense of, of, yeah, protocols. Thank you. So, yes, you may ask.
Okay, it's super quick, and it's actually Scott to you, sorry. Is it, is it our understanding that, so, there's going to be an expense, Mike has agreed to pay for the expense of the entire SEPA process, whether that is done by DSG staff entirely, or whether it's done through an outside group contracted by DSG?
Well, at least for...
At least for any outside peer review we might have. And whether it's, so they have to pay a fee when they submit their SEPA checklist? I think it's around, like, $2,000 to $4,000. I don't remember exactly. Don't usually deal with that detail on a daily basis. So, that's designed to cover staff time, but to the extent that we're overloaded and need to bring in a consultant to do the SEPA review on our behalf that we manage, and they would have to pay that additional cost.
And the second question is that the SEPA review, this is such a simple question, I know the answer is yes. The SEPA review that you'll do with MICA is no different than if any other entity, if Nordstrom wanted to come into downtown and build a store, it would be no different than that process that you'd go through with MICA.
Yeah, that's correct. It's just the same process we'd use anytime we do a SEPA checklist.
Thank you so much. Okay. Anyone else? All right, then, we have a motion to authorize the interim city manager to execute an MOU with MICA in substantial the form attached hereto at Exhibit One. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Carrie and Scott and Steve. There was a lot of work done over the last few days to address questions that came up, including grinding through this weekend. So, thank you very much for your efforts to keep the council informed and allow us to get to a decision point tonight. Okay, we move to Agenda Bill Five. Do you need a break?
You want to take that?
Okay, 10. Come back at 8:57. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, here we go. Meeting will return to order. All right, we return now to our regular meeting with Agenda Bill 5157, 2016 City Council Work Plan. Chip Quarter and Ally Speaks, it says on the Agenda Bill.
It does.
I'll highlight both of you, and off we go.
Credit goes to Ally for putting what I call the horse blanket together, this big, huge piece of paper here, color-coded. Let me try to orient you to this, I don't know if you had a chance to kind of look at it or not. There's two pieces to the work plan. There's this big horse blanket piece, eight and a half by seventeen piece, and then behind that is what we're calling action items, okay? We're not going to go through every single item. I'm going to focus our attention back on the horse blanket page. Is, you'll see that it's divided into four sections, this work plan. Between the two blue lines are what are called the planned council meeting agenda items, okay? The next section, which is, and it's organized by department, you'll see, and also broken down by quarter. The next section are the routine, that's between the, it looks like purple bands. The routine happens every single year, we're not going to talk about those. The orange are the planning session, with the January planning session and the June, May planning session items. And then the red are the unplanned or emergent items that happen, you know, every year. You'll see that, when you look at sixteen and seventeen, we've included seventeen just to give you a sense of what are some of the things that are kind of out there on the horizon, especially as it relates to City Attorney's Office, and even more especially for Development Services Group. Just to provide some perspective, the green that you see there represents when staff's actually doing work on those agenda items. And then when you see numbers in a particular quarter, that represents the number of agenda items that we anticipate it will take, that it will come back to the council at a regular council meeting, or will come back to the council at a planning session. Okay? So with that, let me frame things this way. You'll see that for 2016, the total number of agenda items, again, this is total items that would come back to the council at a regular meeting, or come to the council at one of the planning sessions, is one hundred and fifteen. We think that that's kind of your maximum amount of work that you should plan on doing, that staff can do, and that you guys can digest and process in a typical year. Recognizing that not all agenda bills are the same, okay, but on average, one hundred and fifteen is about the right number. In terms of how that breaks down, typically, you have twenty-two regular meetings in the course of a year. We usually cancel the second meeting in August, second meeting in December, so twenty-two. Shoot for about four agenda items on average is about the right number, if you want to get done by ten, roughly, okay? That's eighty-eight. Assume another roughly seventeen or so agenda items for your two planning sessions, and another ten for unplanned or emergent, and that totals one hundred and fifteen. That's what we recommend, is kind of being the cap. You may wonder, well, what did we do last year? One hundred and thirty-four. Technically, I would say it was even more than that. That was a record, we've never done that many. And when you look at it, not only in terms of just workload on staff, but the number of meetings that went past, eleven o'clock at nine, at night, there was at least nine meetings last year. You had a number of, while they weren't council meetings, you had all those special stakeholder town center group meetings, right, involving some, few council members, staff, et cetera. It was a lot of work last year. I beg you not to repeat last year, on behalf of staff. Okay, with that, let's go through this, I'm not going to go through every single line item, I'm going to start at City Attorney's Office, and I may make a few comments as we go department by department, but I'll just open up for questions, and just to confirm that we got it right, or if you have questions on what is that, okay? So for City Attorney's Office, you'll see there's a lot of franchise work, holy cow. Questions regarding that? Say again?
What's a ZIO?
Carrie?
It's a telecommunications franchise company, and they've submitted for a telecommunications franchise.
What kind of telecommu, I mean, is it cable, or is it?
No, it's internet. So cable would be a cable franchise, so this is telecom.
Okay. Okay, so you'll see work throughout the year, the agenda items hitting the second half of the year and into the first quarter of next year. Can I move on to City Manager's Office?
Yeah, just quickly, Carrie, if I could, just please have a conversation, if you haven't already, with Ross about the PSE franchise. There's a whole conversation going on at K4C about collaborating with other entities around those franchises, and what we can potentially do in terms of encouraging their movement towards cleaner resources.
So collaborating with other cities?
Through the K4C as the, as the organizing entity, yes.
Okay, I'll follow up with Ross about that.
Please do, as well as the county.
Okay.
Yeah, Benson?
You know, I don't remember, you know, we were approached by council, City Council member, Kim Hanson. Is that?
So you're talking about Kim Redmond?
Redmond.
Yes.
Is that thing, is that on this?
I think you're talking about Kim Allen.
Oh, Kim Allen, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And, no, that's not on here. She was contacting you in regards to one of her clients in her role, not as a Redmond City Council member, but she's also an attorney, and she wanted to contact the council about a small cell wireless communication facility, a WCF site. That's not on here, no. And it was my understanding, when we discussed this at the planning session, that the council said that that was not something they wanted to see on the 2016 work plan.
Okay. Chip? Moving on to City Manager's Office. Questions on what's listed there? You'll see transportation issues, of course, from the process, on I-90 loss of mobility. Hopefully, all that looks familiar. Okay, I'm seeing nods, yes ma'am?
I would just, one comment, I-90 loss of mobility, there's only two meetings scheduled, is that really pragmatic?
At this point, those are primarily placeholders. We're not sure exactly both the schedule and the number of issues. If there are more than that, then, yeah, exactly.
Okay, because I would just, obviously, that's not something that we would push out, just because it didn't fit onto our calendar, so.
Right.
Rather make sure that we're being pragmatic.
Okay, I'm going to move us on to Development Services. You'll see they have a lot on there, for Scott. So, yes ma'am?
Do you have questions?
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, one of the ones that I know that probably has caught a number of people's eye, and that is the growth targets that are currently placed there for 2017 Q4, and we know that that's going to be a function of a lot of work that's, you know, done by GMPC, staff negotiations, et cetera. Do we, is that an estimated Q4 2017, or is that based on current work plan that's coming from countywide planning processes?
I haven't seen an actual schedule yet. I was just told it would happen sometime, we would start that process sometime in 2017. So I think like the loss of mobility one, I think that's more or less placeholder at this point.
Great.
And we'll refine that probably at next January's planning session, in terms of exactly when that happens.
Wendy, then Benson?
There we go. The DSG long-range planner position approval, my understanding was the legislature didn't actually approve, or that bill didn't make it through, so is that still up for negotiation if we don't have funding for that position?
Do you want to answer that? Yeah, that just would have been a bonus, if they would have taken that on and allow us to fold that into our development fees. It doesn't change our original funding mechanism that we talked about at your planning session, where while we would increase funding, development fees, that actually doesn't pay for the position, it frees up taxes that help fund DSG to fund the planning position. It's moving money from the left pocket to the right pocket, basically. It looks like development fees are funding it, but they're not really.
So we'll talk about that later.
So we'll be coming back to the council on March 21st with that. You took a soft action, right? You can't take official actions at the planning session. We'll bring an agenda bill back to you on March 21st to take official action, moving forward on that position.
Okay. And my second question to do with the critical areas update, Carrie, since we're already overdue, and you pushed it into next year, if we're overdue, and that's really important.
Could I take, well, I'll take a stab at it, then.
Go ahead, Steve.
Correct me if I'm wrong. That is something that we would love to move up. If you take a look at all of the work items under DSG for this year, we don't see how it's possible without moving something else out, and so we've tried to reflect what we've heard from the council in terms of its priorities for DSG over the next year. It's something that I think we will probably want to bring back to you at the mini planning session in June, June 11th, is that correct? And see if there's any way we can move that work up, because it is important. And Carrie, I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
I just wanted to add that, I believe I mentioned this during the planning session, but typically, critical areas ordinance updates can be controversial, and so they often take quite a bit of time. I was sharing this with Steve, and I don't know that he was too pleased to hear it, but when Sumamish most recently updated their critical areas ordinance, I believe it took six readings of the ordinance. So it usually is a major undertaking, and anticipating that, I think we should start it sooner rather than later.
Okay, so a topic for the mini planning session, unless there's real heartburn about that. Benson?
I just want to get back to the growth target issue, or the question. So I think, I think it was probably one of our consultants who referenced that, this, the number will be something that's discussed in 2017. If we don't really know what the process is, Steve, can we actually drill down to make sure we know what it is? Because, you know, this is something that was certainly talked about during the stakeholders' meetings, you know, concerns about, you know, the GMA assigned number that might be tagged to Mercer Island, and so it's something that I know that the community is definitely interested in, and I don't want to, I want to make sure that we're on top of it and stay in front of the issue, so that the council, council has, and the public, have an opportunity to really discuss this, so we don't, you know, I don't want to go in late in this whole process.
I guess I could certainly ask Scott to go ahead and try to get as much information as possible about what exactly the process and timing is. I've been through these exercises twice myself, as a DSG director and community development director, and they are very intensive efforts, and we need to be on top of it, I think you're absolutely right.
Dan?
Did we ever get resolution on the comp plan question of whether we need to, regarding grants, and the issue that came up, I think, last meeting or the meeting before?
Yeah, if I could respond to that. I've done some research and conversation with both the city engineer and also with Puget Sound Regional Council folks with regard to the certification of our plan, and what impact that might have on potential funding of transportation projects. And the short answer is that we are late in the game in terms of trying to get project, or trying to get our plan certified for this current 2016 round of funding for, it's basically two sources of money, it's federal highway administration money that is administered by the Puget Sound Regional Council, and they're-
Federal Transportation is the other, right?
Pardon me?
Federal Transportation.
FTA, Federal Transportation Administration, but that money goes almost exclusively to transit agencies for things like buses and so forth. So the initial application for those dollars is March 11th. The prospects of us getting our 2015 comprehensive plan updated by March 11th, and certified by Puget Sound Regional Council is very slim.
Sure. Five votes, we can amend the agenda tonight.
So I think the answer is, next time around, hopefully, we'll be in a position. But I do have to say also that we've assessed these funding sources in the past, we don't tend to compete really well, for a couple of reasons. One is that some of the criteria favor regionally designated centers, which we don't have one, and also they favor disadvantaged populations, and they also favor projects that have pretty strong potential for leveraging other funding sources, such as state sources. So projects that do well tend to be state highways that go through communities, and it's a joint funding effort. So, you know, it's not something that we should say we're not interested in, but I just don't want to build up too high expectations as to our success there, and consequently, the fact that we can't apply this year is probably not a big detriment.
The second part of the question, then, Chip, you've got, or Scott, you've got three agenda bills on comp plan. What is, what is your, what's your intentions on comp plan? Are we, why three agenda bills? How much more work do you think we have left there, once the town center stuff is? Now, I assume that the town center and the comp plan go together in terms of the town center portion of the comp plan. Are you expecting a lot of work on other aspects of the comp plan again?
I wouldn't say a lot of work on other aspects, but they do have to be separate agenda bills, so they have to be prepared separately. Even the town center comp plan policies would go over to the comp plan agenda bill. So you're just adopting one comp plan ordinance, rather than two different ordinances. And I had three on there, just based on past history with the council, about how long it takes to get some of these issues through. There's, you haven't had the discussion about level of service, transportation level of service yet, and depending on direction we get from council, after the first discussion on that, we may have to make some amendments to the plan, which could be sort of broad-reaching, potentially. So then we bring back a second agenda bill, and there may be need for a third one. It was just a, again, sort of a placeholder, we don't exactly know.
Okay, anyone else on DSG?
Wireless communication facilities.
That goes back to the comment I made about Kim Allen.
Right. And there's more than just the small cell requirements, there's some new requirements under federal law that we will need to make sure that our code incorporates. So it's just sort of a, it's an umbrella, kind of a broad descriptor of working on our wireless communication facility code and regulations.
All right, Chip? Sure, so we talked a little bit, just when you thought you were getting away, we talked a little bit about the, at the planning session, about maybe a capacity plan for the city, where we said, you know, we're talking about the numbers that we're taking in for the comprehensive plan, and the, all the building heights, but never have we said, the schools can withstand this many human beings before they expand, the roads can withstand. Is there any thought process, maybe, I don't know if that's a Scott question or a City Manager question?
I can answer that. I think those are good questions to ask as part of the discussion about growth targets, because part of what will inform, what we tell King County in terms of the growth targets that Mercer Island is willing to accept, could be that sort of capacity analysis.
So are we agreed, either all of us, or Scott, that that's a piece of work that will be done?
I think it, I think it will be done. I would say it's probably a good approach to take, I haven't really thought a lot about how we're going to approach the growth targets yet, but that certainly would be an initial step we might want to take. So yes, I would agree that we should take a look at that.
Okay. So what we've heard so far is that Scott will be looking at this question of the process around growth targets early, and coming back to us, and it seems to me that, Dave, if you're willing to re-raise that question at that time, you'll be at an appropriate moment to say, and now, as you're bringing this back, let's talk about having this conversation. Is that fair, Scott?
Right, and, and the new, the person we hire in the new position would be a primary contributor to that work, so that person, again, we don't have a person in mind or on board or anything, actually, we haven't funded it yet, might have some experience working in other jurisdictions, where they've had some ideas on how to approach this. So I'd rely on that expertise also.
Okay? Chip, onward.
Financial, rolling, 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 on to finance, budget process, final citizen survey results, okay? H, yes?
Is that the, is that the usual distribution of, is it all heavily in the fourth quarter?
Yes, sir. It's all your review, you end up doing, what do I have there? Yeah, five, and it begins in October, and we've actually cut out a meeting, following the pattern from two years ago. We used to do six meetings, we've cut it down to five.
All right, I look forward to going through the process. You talked, we talked, though, about possibly having to go to the public about funding something, whether it's mental health councils or something like that. Obviously, this schedule doesn't imply-
You will go through the budget process, and like we talked at the planning session, at least what I had pitched to the council for you to determine during the budget process, is you'll have to balance the budget, and I anticipate being able to balance at least seventeen, eighteen is questionable, and you can kind of tentatively, if you will, balance the budget, you know, saying we'd have to, I'll just make this up, do it on the expenditure side through cuts, and then that's when you have the community conversation in the first quarter of next year, after you've adopted the budget, and it's kind of a great starting point, if you will. This is what we're going to have to do in eighteen, absent new funding. Okay, HR, City Manager Recruitment, you're well aware what's going on there. Maintenance Department, those should all look familiar, I believe. Questions on those?
Yep, Benson?
The question I have is on this water event update. So does that just, are we just going to have one annual update, or, you know, given the seriousness of the problem, should there be more updates?
Just raising a question.
Haven't decided at this point, we've already had this update, and I would anticipate, I would anticipate it probably will be an annual thing. If there becomes, if new information comes forward, depending on when that comes forward, you know, it could be a planning session item to kind of update the council on, but at this point, I think one is all we're planning on, but there could be a second one, just depends, as we talk with SPU.
Was your question, does the council want more than one update, or was it, was it what staff wants to give the council?
Well, I guess, yeah, I don't, no, we had a, we had a very in-depth stats report, which is great, but I'm just curious whether or not, you know, maybe there could be a shorter update, just letting people know what's going on, and that, again, through the monitoring that we're doing, that there's no further incidents, but, you know, again, just kind of an ongoing report back to the community. It doesn't have to be very in-depth like we had the last time.
Yeah, I, my radar is highly active, looking for that opportunity. I thought we had reached that point, we're not quite there yet. There's this conversation, conversations going on with SPU, that we need to get through and resolve before we then can report back to the community. I'm hopeful that'll be some point this year, I just don't know, just don't know yet, so. Parks and Recreation?
Can I, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
King County Sewer Project, you've got out in the Q4. The last time we heard about that, we were waiting for, remind me if I'm wrong, we were waiting for staff to come up with a position for the council to then-
On the options?
Yeah, to do something with, to communicate to the county on the route for, for the pipe.
Yeah.
And I'm surprised that that's going to go all the way out to Q4.
They just called for another public hearing, the card just came in the mail.
So, I mean, I think, my memory is foggy on that, I don't know, Kirsten, if you remember what we did on that, or?
Well, I'll pipe in here, that I recall that we were trying to ask questions at a level of detail that they were a bit squeamish about getting into. They were sort of expecting that we would give some sort of general sense of things, and they would go away and do whatever it was they decided to do. But I think you raise a good point, that we weren't ready to give up that much authority around it, and I think from a staff perspective, we need to make sure that there's, we haven't ceded our authority to have an opinion, or to direct which course gets taken on this.
We'll, we'll talk as staff and make sure that this is the proper timing, and if we need to come back earlier, we will certainly do that, but-
Okay, I'll follow up with Jason.
Yep.
Thank you.
Parks and Rec will be coming to the council in April, this whole Island Crest Park Ballfield Lights and Southfield Improvements project opportunity slash conundrum. The Parks and Rec Subcommittee will be briefed, is it this week or next week?
It's next week.
Next week, on Thursday, regarding this issue, and then we'll come back to the council in April, this is study session.
Just, just trying to align what's on the planning schedule with what's on the City Council Work Plan. Study session, April 4th, for Island Crest Park Field Improvement and Groveland Beach Park renovation projects. Yet the Groveland Beach Park renovation doesn't show up on the work plan, is that just an oversight, or?
Yeah, it's really tied into that.
The capital.
It's really linked, because those are the two big parks projects.
Okay.
So I'll add that.
Anything else on Parks and Rec? Benson?
I thought I saw it, I can't find it now. The issue regarding the whole question about off-leash dogs, I mean, I don't see it here.
The staff, staff's going to bring that, staff's going to bring that to the Parks and Rec Subcommittee.
Oh, okay.
We did.
I'm bringing my dog to the meeting.
Yeah, we did.
So that's, again, just right now, on a staff level, it's not anticipated to come back to the council?
A staff and Subcommittee level, and we're anticipating that the Subcommittee will decide whether it comes to the council or not.
And that's why it's not here right now, though.
Yeah.
And council along, it would be then put under the unplanned emergent agenda items if it does come back, because it wasn't part of the initial plan. Because it wasn't part of the initial plan.
So this part of the work plan represents, again, all the agenda items will come to you in your regular meeting or planning sessions. Did you want to just quickly look at the action items, which are page four? Sure. Just to make sure we got them all. So most of these came out of the parking lot. All of these kind of were discussed at one point or another during your January planning And you know, maybe I will just tick through them one at a time, just to make sure we got them. Economic Development Committee or Office of Economic Development, that got put on the schedule or agenda for the mini planning session this June to discuss further. That came from Wyker and Sanderson. Financial Recovery Plan, just had to do with the projected deficits. We will be discussing that, obviously, during the budget process.
That came from Mr. Wiesentine Tur.
He's got, he's got a double, an extra T in there.
Who's the name? I thought was hard enough already without adding extra.
I, I kind of pronounced it Wiesentainer.
Congratulations, Mayor Bassett, you won the prize for finding the typo. Just kidding. No, sorry about that.
Ooh, Ally, Ally's feeling her oats tonight.
The, the third item came from Dan on looking at our process for, when it comes to street repairs, when there's been new utility installations, can we have a kind of dedicated private party deal, deal with that? So Jason, who's hopes will be looking at that and doing a memo to the council. Community Center Support, also from Dan. There's a support policy, budget policy. And so Bruce Fletcher, the Parks and Rec Director, was going to meet with new council members and others if needed to kind of go over that budget policy. This also will get teed up and discussed during the budget process as well. Improving the dashboard, which is, again, not, it should be called the report card. And this is Dave and me getting together and kind of talking about what can we do to make that more useful from the council's perspective. Thrift Store, this came from Dan, good question about, you know, future operations issues and expansion status. Cindy was going to brief the new council members and others that are interested in kind of where things are at with that. Emergency Operations, Command Center Policy, Business Continuity, et cetera. This came from Dan and from Wendy. Jen Franklin will meet with the new council members and others if, if needed, if interested, I should say, to go over the city's emergency management program. Dan brought up the Bollards Post Kamisha Case, and this will be, go to the Parks and Rec Subcommittee for discussion. Councilmember Communication with the Public and Related Social Media. This will go to the Organizational Effectiveness Committee. Sorry, I have an abbreviation for that committee, which I won't repeat. In any case, which still needs to be formed, but it will get put on their agenda. City Sustainability Action Plan from Mayor Bassett. This is on the 16 work plan already. Green Building Standards, also in the work plan. MICA Update, work plan. Maintenance Department Performance Audit, also on the work plan. Future Funding of School Counselors. This will get discussed during the budget process. Town Center Vision and Code, in process on the work plan. Sound Transit Negotiation, also on the work plan. Okay? Questions on all those? Any questions? Okay. Moving on to the other additional items that weren't necessarily, that weren't on the parking lot. Ally's already started the agenda approval of your council meetings at the beginning of the meeting. Letter Supporting Cost Recovery for Long-Term Planning, which went nowhere, already done. Cost of LID to Underground Power from PSC will be folded into the PSC Electric franchise. Fireworks Ban, Public Safety Subcommittee, and also there's a question, as you've seen, on the Biennial Citizen Survey, which, which again, will be conducted beginning March 1st through the 6th. Honeywell Contamination Update. That will be a staff memo from Jason and Carrie, as needed. Sales tax on, in terms from, from Sound Transit, paid to the city Mercer Island. This will be a staff memo from Kirsten. Level of Service and Number of Outages from PSC, also a staff memo. City Manager, we're going to assign that to Wendy. We changed that. City Manager Reports, Steve's already started that, just this past week. I really think those are good. I always thought those were good, that Noel put out when he was here. And then finally, forming the Organizational Effectiveness Committee. Wendy, Dan, and Dave, to be done in March. I think we captured everything. And so this is a truly additional work, and, and quite a bit, but doesn't represent council agenda items necessarily. Do we get it? Are you good with that?
Sorry.
Okay. And what we'll do is we'll, we'll come back and check in with the council, the mini planning session, as we usually do, on progress to date, any adjustments we need to make to the plan, as, you know, as new things emerge, et cetera. With that, I would love to have a motion. Oh. We decided to formalize it.
We're formality with this, all right.
I move to approve the 2016 City Council Work Plan attached as Exhibit 1 and is amended by the City Council on February 22nd, 2016.
Which there were no amendments.
Did not amend.
No material amendments.
You're just assuming that we wrote 10.
I really was.
All right. So I approve the, move to approve the 2016 City Council Work Plan attached as Exhibit 1.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Chip? Thank you, Ally. Thank you, Steve. And everybody recognizes, of course, that, you know, this is a little bit of work in progress as it goes on. It will, it will change, but getting everything spread across the year, coming out of the planning session is exactly the right thing to be doing right now. So, thank you. Okay, we move to other business. Councilmember Absences. We have none this evening. I wanted to report to you that I will be in absentia on the 18th of April. So, Ms. Deputy, you will be in charge that evening.
Do your best.
I'm sure you will do wonderfully.
I've already reported in to be the 4th, April 4th.
Okay. Okay.
And the 7th, which is the giant meeting of the school board.
Okay. Anyone else?
I will be out the 12th. Sorry.
March or April?
April.
Uh, no.
Yes, it's a meeting on the 12th.
No, there's no meeting yet.
But there's no council meeting.
Okay.
Just reporting in.
Dan, let's schedule a meeting.
All right. So that takes care of councilmember absences. We're going to move to planning schedule.
The planning schedule is in your packet, and you'll notice that we have made a pretty good start at populating it, based on the work plan that you just went through. I'll note that for March 7th, we have tentatively scheduled two final long plaid approvals. And those originally were scheduled, I think, for earlier, February 22 perhaps, but the materials that were needed in order for us to process that did not arrive from the applicants. So, and I meant to check to see whether they've arrived as of today, and I did not do that. And I see that, that Scott has left, so I will double-check on that. But other than that, if there are questions...
Well, I see 6 o'clock there. Is that because we plan an executive session, then?
Hmm, no.
So I get the second prize. Right. In order to not get shot, though, is, I mean, do, do these long plaid approvals really to each take 60 minutes? Are there going to be that contra, look, I'm just saying that we have two 60-minute things, can we put, get, be really productive and have something else? I mean, I love finishing it not before 10 o'clock, but this seems a little light, and maybe there's study session or something we can do that's productive?
Well, or we may have another executive session that evening.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah. When I see only a few items and...
We'll, we'll certainly look for opportunities if, if we can. As of right now, this is the only thing that we have specifically planned.
For those of you who've been on council with me, won't be surprised when I do this. And that is, we currently have the fireworks sales permit approval on the consent calendar for June 6th. We can just take that off consent now and put it into regular business.
What's, do we know what's happened to that bill and the legislature getting rid of the one-year requirement on changing the fireworks laws?
It did not go forward. I think it died last week.
It did.
It also died.
All right. Anything else on planning schedule? Very good. Okay, we move to board appointments. And there's nothing attached to our packet for this evening, but I wanted to bring up one issue that's, a board appointment opportunity that's out there. And I will just simply read this memo, which is coming from Jonathan Wilson, Airport Manager, Renton Airport. He says, "Hello, Mr. Bassett. For a long while, we enjoyed having Councilmember Mike Ciro from Mercer Island participate in the Renton Airport Advisory Committee, the R-A-A-C. We received a note from him indicating he was no longer a council member. Curious if Mercer Island would like to continue participating in the RAC, and if so, who would be the new representative?" The RAC usually, usually meets, the RAC usually meets four times per year to discuss airport issues, and the next meeting is currently scheduled for May. Please advise." So Mike was passionate about participating in this. I'm curious whether there's one or more council members who have a similar level of interest. If there's one, you're on. If there's more than one, I'll sort out who. If there are zero, we will leave it, leave it alone.
Zero to zero.
So, okay, so a little bit more on this. So the Renton Airport, of course, has a flight path that sort of runs down Island Crest Way. And in recent years, they've done a lot to encourage planes to not use that flight path, but instead to turn in over the lake and descend to the airport, reducing the impact on Mercer Island. But there are still flights that, that come over. And Mike was particularly passionate about concerns about the noise that was created or safety issues having to do with those flights, living at the south end of the island, as he does. And in addition, in the early years that Mike and I were on the council, there was a plan afoot to have the Renton Airport become a repair facility for corporate slash private jets, which would have increased significantly the number of small, loud planes overflying the island. And so Mike was, for that reason, also very interested in this. That plan was set aside. It was, it was halted, large, in a large part because Boeing, rather than, the thought was that Boeing might be moving out, to some extent, of Renton and putting their, their construction elsewhere. And then they decided, no, that they were going to really concentrate 737 production at Renton. And, and so other activities didn't come to pass. The number of flights, as far as I understand it, has dropped pretty significantly over time from what it once was. And so this, we occasionally hear from citizens who are passionate about, concerns about this, but not to the degree that we did some years ago. So that's, as best I can give, give you a bit of history of the issue and the, our involvement in the RAC. Is there anyone who's interested in participating in this?
Could you be a council member, or could we get them in on the public?
I don't know. Certainly, I mean, I think the public certainly can, I assume the meetings are open, public meetings, and, and so the council can attend. I don't know that we can have a public citizen representative. I could ask that question of them.
Aviation folks would be interested in it.
Yeah.
And then Renton, going to get to work, 20 years and that.
Okay.
Please use your microphones.
I'm in Renton quite a bit for work, so if it would benefit this council for me to participate...
Well, Wendy, would you be interested in taking this on?
I would be happy to.
And maybe we do a check back some months from now, and you let us know if it's working for you or not?
Perfect.
Okay. So I'll, I'll let them know that we're handing it to you and put them in touch with you, unless you would like it.
No. I, I think we settled that. We, since we're on board appointments, there is an opening on the Arts Council now, someone designed, one person I know had, had indicated interest, but I mean, just put it out there for everybody, that there is an opening on the Arts Council for someone who's passionate about the arts to get more nominations in.
And similarly, I, I've had a conversation with Brian Cairns. He hasn't, I don't know if you, Ally, if you've seen it yet, but he said he would need to step off of the library board. His wife's illness is consuming a lot of time. And so we'll be needing to advertise for a library board participant as well.
And there may be an opening on the Open Space Board.
Okay.
There may be an opening on the Open Space Board.
By someone named W?
Yeah, sorry.
The other, the other thing is we will be starting our recruitment at the end of March for all the boards and commissions for all the expiring positions. So sometimes when we get close to this, it's a little bit easier just to wait, unless that board really needs somebody on there right away, and we've got applicants. So we'll kind of figure it out as we go.
And that may well be the way to handle all of these or some of these.
Yeah.
So, okay. So that ends board appointments, unless anybody's got anything else. Councilmember Reports. Benson, you want to begin?
I attended a fair number of meetings, but I don't think there was a whole lot of action taken at some of these meetings, so I'm just going to skip that. But I did, I attended, I'm on the PSRC Transportation Policy Board. So they met, and just because we've been talking about the grants and the fact that Mercer Island is not eligible for some of these transportation grants, we are in the process of looking at the, the review process and the eligibility requirements. So once we narrow, narrow that down, I'll certainly pass it back to Steve. And, you know, so going forward, hopefully we can position ourselves, you know, perhaps in the future. I have to at least, I said this to Dave as we walked in, I just, as a, as a personal matter, my daughter's engaged. Anyway, enough, enough said. Okay. Thank you.
You invited everyone from Mercer Island now to the RAC.
I just got an email, that's all I got.
Wendy?
So I have a calendar item for everybody. April 26 is the Mercer Island Schools Foundation Breakfast at the high school, so save the date.
Be table captain.
Well, I would host a table if you'd all come.
All right. Anything else? No? Okay. Jeff?
Yeah, I guess I'll put one date on there. On March the 5th, which is a Saturday, 1:00, at the end of the Arts Council half-day retreat, we are dedicating the Twin Foxes statue that's also being unveiled over at our sister city in France. So I guess you're all invited. I think Bruce would love you to...
I unfortunately will be gone.
Allez-vous dehors.
I, I responded to, I think it was Amber, letting her know that I would not be able to be there, so...
Well, either somebody will or I will.
Perhaps you, as Arts Council Liaison, will...
Absolument.
Yeah, give a speech in French.
You can have any one in here or the one in France.
Les deux.
Debbie? Dan?
So I went to the superintendent's, School Superintendent's Advisory Committee for the first time. They meet like three times a year, I think. It was, it was interesting, just a chance to, to see what the school district is working on, and it's a, as Debbie was on the committee last year, that they just want, it's a committee of, made up of a lot of stakeholders. They're not particularly looking for input as much as they're looking for having a vehicle to let the community know what they're working on. And a lot of it was spent on talking about diversity and, and at this particular meeting. And then updating people on the progress with the school construction. I also am on the Regional Policy Committee, which is an interesting committee. And it's, Claudia, when she was talking tonight, was talking about the Best Starts for Kids levy, and that has managed to create a little bit of a controversy in the Regional Policy Committee. The Regional Policy Committee, for those who don't know, which would have been me as of about three weeks ago, consists of several county council members, several representatives of sound cities, and a couple of Seattle City Council members. And apparently, they're one of three regional committees that by county charter are referred, various matters are referred to them, and they actually have a role in, in making some decisions, which then go to the county council. The county council can overrule them, but they actually have to overrule them. They can't just ignore them. And it takes like a supermajority to overrule them. So it's, it's sort of interesting. So apparently... So, apparently, the Best Starts for Kids levy, as well as the other levy that Claudia was referring to, the dependency, drugs and dependency levy, or whatever it is, both are supposed to come through the RPC, and the county executive has now decided that he doesn't have time to bring it to the RPC and is asking the RPC to waive jurisdiction, which, as you can appreciate, has caused all kinds of consternation among certain members of the RPC and among various people within Sound Cities who used to be on the RPC and are feeling like the county is trying to run over the RPC. So, this is, we got a conference call on Friday, we got another conference call tomorrow. Long and the short of it is, it's not clear at all who's going to blink on this one, but it's, Claudia has come up with a proposal, which the, which Sound Cities so far is not getting behind at this point for how to deal with it, but it's a little bit of tension going on between the RPC and, again, between Sound Cities and the county at this point. You know, that the, Sound Cities Governing Board is, the board director is involved in it already, so it's kicked up very quickly to higher levels within Sound Cities, but...
Are there direct implications for, for either of these initiatives if this doesn't get resolved?
No, it's a question of timing. It's a question of how fast the money gets out on the street. Because the county is not, doesn't have, hasn't even finished formulating their proposal. The executive hasn't formulated his proposal yet on how to, where to distribute the money. And that proposal's supposed to go to the RPC, and it's not even ready to go to the RPC, and the executive wants the money out in the street by June, so...
It's a process.
It's a process problem. Yeah. So, it's just, some noses are out of joint at the moment. And I'm sort of watching this thing, because I'm the new person on the block and trying to figure out what's going on, so I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other right now. I also went to another regional committee, which I wasn't aware of before, going on it, called the Joint Recommendations Committee, which Benson's wife is very much involved in through the county, and which makes recommendations on, on community development grants and particularly for housing programs. Arch gets a fair amount of funding from it. And it's, it's an interesting committee. It's, and I won't bore you with all the details right now, but it's, because I've only been to one meeting, and it's, but it's, it is fascinating to see how the money is distributed around the county and how much goes to administration, which is a substantial part. The one number for Mercer Island that I got out of the whole thing, there is a home repair program that the county runs, and, which is like more than $100,000 a year. Mercer Island got $35 last year from the home repair program. So, $35. So, it's, it's not exactly something that we're taking advantage of. It may be that the demand isn't here, but it's, the number just stood out there. Every other community has got thousands, several thousand, sometimes significantly more. You get to Mercer Island, $35. And it sort of, I don't, I just, I don't know whether Youth and Family Services just doesn't engage at all with this program, or just has decided that's not where they want to prioritize their work. But it was sort of jumped out at me in looking at that, so...
A perfect example of how by being at the table, you can potentially change the, change the conversation and bring some money home.
Triple A.
Triple A. Somebody can, somebody can make a very modest change to their home.
That's all I got.
Dave?
Yep.
So, Utility Board.
You ready to say that?
That's right. Utility Board. So, on the water issue, they expect to complete the Coliform Action Plan by June, which is good news. They're doing some, the follow-up to the testing is, they have a series of requests into SPU 1 regarding the emergency injection system we talked about at the planning session, an analyzer, and then some work order information that they've requested. There is a meeting this, in March, with the Quality, Water Quality Director from SPU, which they thought was a great thing. They haven't had a chance to meet with that person, I think, up to now. Got a really fast response from him, so I think we'll get some more information once they meet with him. There was a lot of discussion about to do, what to do with the 30-inch Mercer Slue pipe. I think we talked about that a little bit, which is sinking, and so how to remedy that. And much of it was the same update that we heard at the planning session, so those were the new items that I wanted to share with you. Anything else? Utility Board, ours.
Everybody in the Utility Board is named Bryant. That's the other issue. There's four Bryans on the board.
I'm not sure I fit in. That was the, that was the basis on which we appointed.
That's how you appoint.
Yeah. All right. And for myself, I think I have nothing. I think I, if I have something, yeah. I was on vacation. Well, I was going to, yeah, I was going to report. My family had a, had a fine time on vacation. One other Mercer Island family we bumped into there had a son break a hand and father dislocate a shoulder, so their vacation was a little bit more problematic than ours. But all in all, good skiing was had, so... Okay, with that, we are at an end. Unless there's anything else, we are adjourned. Thank you.